Good evening. Welcome to the August 7th Marion City School Regular Board Meeting. I'm glad to see all of you here tonight. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then keep standing for a minute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please stand for a moment of silence. We've lost two employees. One is a former retired teacher, which is Coach Klebsig, and Anthony Hall, who recently passed. Thank you. Veronica, call the roll, please.
Mr. McInnes?
Here.
Mr. Ratliff?
Here.
Mr. Weidling?
Here.
Ms. Dyer?
Here.
Ms. McKay?
Here. Thank you. All right, we come to Item 3, Superintendent Report, Back-to-School Updates. Olivia, I'll give you the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, and to all the board members. It's a pleasure to be here, starting my first full year. We are in full swing, and I thought we would just take an opportunity to update the board on some of the things that we're going to prepare for opening week. I have asked Julie Kenny to come and just give an update on staffing, because I know that a lot of you have had some questions about that. Just, we will have our convocation on Monday, August 14. That will be here with all staff, so we will meet with them in the morning, and then they will be all participating in professional development in the afternoon. We also have our open house. It's a little bit different this year. We have worked with our MEA Union to stagger those starts, because we did get feedback from teachers, and we got feedback from parents last year that it was difficult to get around to open house when it was all the same time. So our high school open house will be from 3:00 to 5:00 on Tuesday. Our middle school will be from 4:00 to 6:00, and all of our elementaries will be from 5:00 to 7:00. We are allowing our teachers to have some flex time that day, so they can come in a couple of hours late, so that we can make sure that we're there to greet families. And we welcome all of our board members to drop by at open house if you want to. And then our transition day will be on Wednesday, August 16. And that is our day for our pre-K, our kindergarten, our 6th grade and 9th grade students to get into the building, to get acclimated, learn how to get around, meet their teachers, get their schedules, those types of things. And then our first full day will be on Thursday, August 17.
Great.
I also wanted to let you know that we have a big push this year to get all of our contact information updated. So all of our returning families have received a letter with something in it called SNAP Code, and those parents can be directed right to their child's Power School record. And we're really going to have a push with our secretaries and our staff to make sure that we have updated contact information. We've also added a flag in our Power School system for each student, so that we actually can see the date that it was last updated. So that is going to be one of our goals, is to make sure that we have updated contact information for every student. So you're going to hear us making those announcements as we speak to parents. And then I'll have Dr. Kenny come up and just give a brief update on where we are with staffing for the year.
Members of the board, good evening. Thanks for allowing me this time to give you an update. I want to focus on a little bit of our conversation concerning the legacy pillar. As we know, we've been talking a lot about in the past years how to grow our own, how to keep our people satisfied, how to recruit the right members, and how to really continue to communicate with the Marion community about what is important here in our Marion City School system. So in our efforts going forward, we're going to try to combine our Human Resources Department with our Communications Department and our DEI systems, so those kind of look a little more global in our approach this year. So with that, we want to roll out a theme in connection with Johnny Jackson, our DEI Coordinator, called Finding Our Joy. And that means finding our joy within MCS. So let's flashback a couple of years ago, when I first started in 2001, 2021, '22 school year. It was on the front page of the Marion Star that we only had two veteran principals that remained in the district. Flash forward to this year, we only interviewed to replace two principal positions this year. One of those principal positions stayed in-house and moved on to district office. So that's really only one position. Last year, we hired, in the year 2022, 2023, 103 new certified positions. That's 86 new teachers, seven new administrators, nine contracted teachers, and one contracted administrator. 103. So out of our whole certified pile, that's 24% that we've replaced. This year, starting the '23, '24 school year, we're only replacing 55. That's 50 new teachers, four new administrators, one contracted teacher. So that's down to 13%. So going back to our legacy pillar, our goal is to reduce that retention by 10% each year. Well, this year, in one year, you can see 24% down to 13%. So what are our efforts? I think when we meet as a district team, that includes when we talk to our teachers, and we're open and we're honest, we're communicating, we are giving them information, we're being transparent, and we're asking them to participate, staff, students, and community, we see that feedback, and we hear from them. So last week at National Night Out, place was packed. We went to the Fall Athletic Coaches Meeting. Great turnout, all kinds of volunteers and full-time coaches that are helping this out. We came here, had parent meetings, parent and student athlete meeting, lots of participation. So I think overall, if I would sum it up, we're on the upswing. So you can take that short piece of data and just say, I think we're on the upswing. Things are looking good for us. We are still looking for a Communications Director. We're in the process of that, so we've had two rounds of interviews, so we're getting there, we're almost there. We want to make sure we have the right selection. We have a halftime speech and language pathologist person that we're looking for, could be full-time. Adapted physical education, if you're seeing a trend here, those are the hard-to-fill positions that are specialized in licensure, and a math lab at the middle school. But we have prospects for all of those positions, so they are still in the works.
Okay. Thank you.
That's exciting. And again, this will be one of those things that will continue to update in our regular updates to the board. And that actually concludes my report, and Kevin has some updates for enrollment.
Good evening, board members. I first want to take this opportunity to thank you for this wonderful opportunity to serve as Assistant Superintendent. I take this job very serious, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you. So I'm going to talk to you about our enrollment and what does that look like. Let me start by saying our enrollment will look very fluid with these first couple of days of school. We have students that will be coming back to us, but then there are also students that once they get back, we will get some records transferred, so they'll be leaving us. What you're going to see on the left side in that gray column is the end of that fiscal year '23, and then that line green to the right is our current enrollment and where we stand. So you can see at the very bottom, when you see our total numbers, 4202 to 4287, our enrollment continues to go up. Now, our kindergarten looks a little low, but I assure you, kindergarten comes in on that first day of school, ready to enroll, and so those numbers will definitely go up. Also, what we're doing this year is, and any enrollment is happening right now, so if you know anybody, they can call our enrollment center at 740-223-4422, and they will definitely enroll them and get them enrolled in our school district. We also, bids went out with our bus drivers. So today, actually, our bus drivers went around our city touring and learning their routes and their times. So in the near, near, near future, their bus routes will be put onto our website, where families will begin to get that information disseminated to them. We're also starting this year, we've started with expectation meetings in our buildings. So I collaborated with our principals and with our bus compound, and bringing all of our bus drivers to their designated buildings. Starting tomorrow at 1 o'clock, the principal will hold an expectation meeting with our bus drivers. I have sent out talking points for them, so everybody will get the same message and be on the same page. Our principals and secretaries are back in our buildings, so if there's any questions or concerns, please call our buildings, they're up and running. And this year, we're really honored and excited that none of our kids have to bring supplies this year, that we're going to provide supplies to them, so we're really excited with that as well. That's what I have on enrollment.
Thank you, Kevin.
So when will the bus route information be published?
It should be the next day or two.
Okay. Will it be, how will it be published?
On the Facebook page and then on the individual buildings.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. Going on to new business. Item A, Impractical to Transport. The superintendent recommends that it's practical to transport Kealan, Vernon, and Carrara, Vernon, to Delaware Christian School due to the time and distance required to transport. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. McInnes?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. B, Employment, Substitute Employee. The superintendent recommends employment of Ayers Ratliff Jr. as a substitute teacher. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Discussion.
Should we pull that out because we're rocky?
Yeah. All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. McInnes?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Abstained.
And Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item C, Extended Days. Superintendent recommends the approval of up to nine extended days for Jennifer Lane, literacy teacher leader. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. McInnes?
Abstained.
And Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. All right, is there a need to go into executive session regarding the consent calendar and employment?
Yes, because I want to pull out...
Okay, we can go into executive session.
Yep.
Do I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
All right. Call the roll, please.
Mr. McInnes?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. All right, we are going into executive session to discuss the Item 1, Appointment, Employment, Dismissal, Promotion, Demotion, et cetera. And we hope to return in about, hopefully, 15 to 30 minutes. We forgot to add public participation on the agenda, so we're going to go through this consent calendar, and then after that is over, we'll do public participation, okay? All right. All right. Do you want to pull?
Yes. Madam President, I'm asking to pull the high school principal position off of the consent.
All right, so we're voting on Items B through L, and then we'll do a motion for Adonis.
So moved. Second.
Call the roll, please. Mr. McInnes?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item 9, Superintendent recommends approval of Adonis Bolden as Harding High School Principal. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Thank you, Madam President. And first of all, let me caveat my comments. This has nothing to do with Mr. Bolden personally or professionally, on whether he's qualified or not qualified. I'm assuming, because we're getting a recommendation from the superintendent, I'm assuming that her and the committees that brought him to our attention checked out his qualifications. My complaint with how this is being done is strictly procedural, in the fact that we had an internal candidate approved for another position, which opened this one up. I think when we're looking at a position such as high school principal that is in charge of so many things, meaning this building, as well as all of our students that go here, as well as dealing with parents and staff and so forth, everything that goes into a high school principal, we need more than the couple weeks that it took to find Mr. Bolden. I believe that cut on a number of people that were able to be, able to apply. I believe it cuts down on the number of people that are in contracts and able to get out of those contracts because of our late posting. And I believe because of that, we may or may not have the best person for the job, because we have limited ourselves in how many people can apply and the number of applications that we can go through. I think it's very alarming that we take at least twice or three times as long to find our football coach here at the high school than we did to find our high school principal. And for that will be the reason that I'm voting no. Thank you.
Just briefly, my reservations, again, have nothing to do with the gentleman in question, it's more the position. I looked at this as an emergency hire, where I would have liked to have spent, and we didn't have much time to do it because of the situation. My concern is the multi-year deal, and Mr. Bolden might turn out to be the best possible hire we could have had, and to prove that after a year. My concern's, again, not with him as a person, but just the two-year deal and just a difference of opinion here, and that's my...
Okay. Call the roll, please.
All righty. Mr. McInnes?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
No.
Mr. Weidling?
No.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Motion carried. Welcome, Adonis. We look forward to your work. We're excited about this position for you, and we wish you the best. All right, we are going to turn now to public participation, and since it's not on the agenda, I can't read it all, but what I'll do is, I'm going to call, each person has three minutes of time, and I do set a timer, and you can come forward up to the microphone when I call your name. So we'll give you three minutes, and the first person is Sarah Pilsner.
Hi, board. My name is Sarah Pilsner. This is my 25th year working as an educator for Marion City Schools. I'm here today because I want to discuss something that was said at the July 13th Board of Education meeting, around 53 minutes into the meeting. A meeting where the Board of Education members were discussing the word commitment in regards to Marion City Schools. The speaker at the meeting asked about where to place the word commitment in regards to the four pillars for Marion City Schools. That was when a board member said the following, and this is a quote, "I just don't think teachers should get paid for everything that they do. Can't they just do something without getting a stipend? Or, you know, at some schools, I see people at the door ready to leave at the dismissal time and stuff. I just want to see some commitment," unquote. I would like to clarify many things for this board member, as well as for everyone that was in attendance at that board meeting that did not speak up on behalf of the hard-working teachers at Marion City Schools. After all these years of teaching, I know an elementary teacher's job cannot physically be done within the hours designated in our contract. First of all, we are paid in the elementary level from 8:15 to 3:45. Many come to school before that for various reasons, and many stay after that for various reasons. For example, meetings with parents, planning, grading, cleaning our rooms, MTSS meetings, behavior meetings, IEP meetings, I could go on. When teachers leave right at 3:45, which they're allowed to do, and I have done many times myself, it's also for various reasons. For example, doctor appointments that they made for right after school so that they wouldn't have to take a sick day. Pick up their babies from the sitter on time so they don't have to pay an extra hour if they're late picking up their child. Getting home to feed their family before having to go back out to attend a sporting event or other unpaid extracurricular event for Marion City Schools. Again, I can go on and on. This board member is well aware that teachers in this district have worked open house days unpaid for many, many years. We have worked several parent nights unpaid. When I was a classroom teacher, I used to stay until past 8ish at least once a week to work on lesson plans, until my tires were slashed in the parking lot, and my husband said, "Take your work home to do so I know that you're safe." Please don't assume that when you see a teacher come in on time or leave on time, they were not still taking things home to do. Even if we are empty-handed, many of us still do extra work on our Chromebooks at home. Also, please understand that even if we do come to school on time and leave on time, that is okay. Those are the hours that we were hired to work. If you want us to do extra hours, we should get a stipend. I am so happy that this year, our hard-working union fought for you to change your hours worked in open house days, so that we don't have to work them unpaid. Now, too bad we weren't paid for all the hours we put in setting up our classrooms before school starts. I will end by saying that this is my hopes, that this board member will come forward in the board meeting, and only because this is where she undervalued us, and truly apologize for what she had said and for the damage she created by undoing the hard work of what that meeting was supposed to be about, positive change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay. Ally Ellis.
I am speaking to you today as the Marion Education Association Vice President. I too am speaking on behalf of the comment that was made at the last board meeting. Our teachers are committed. Our staff is committed, not just our teachers, our custodians, our secretaries, our maintenance workers, our bus drivers, principals, from top down from the DSC, I believe our district is committed. Please do not make assumptions when you see someone leaving early. There could have been a family emergency. There's lots of things that we put on hold, and oftentimes, we do not put ourselves first, we do not put our families first, because we are teaching other people's children. So as our teachers have been in the buildings, thanks to the wonderful custodia staff that we have, who have gotten our rooms ready so we can be in there, I've been in my room for the last two weeks, as soon as we could get in on July 31st. Otherwise, I know there's other meetings that we are supposed to attend during the summer. Our summers are not free. We work hard, and I just ask that you respect that.
Thank you.
So I feel like I need to respond. I really feel like I need to respond. Yeah, oh, because obviously that those comments were aimed at me, and I did see your comment on Twitter, Instagram, or whatever, venue on social media, that you put, "What is commitment?" And I saw you guys, and I saw you and Panera were on the same email train. Everybody's got my telephone number. I feel like we could have had a real substantive conversation about what my meaning was behind the comments that I made. I, again, I apologize if I did. I was a teacher for 35 years, and, I mean, I was there from sunup to sundown, and I know what teachers do, and I understand the rigor in which teachers are put under. I get that. My only thing was, you put a comment on Twitter or social media, and I would have felt better if someone had, like, come to me, and like I said, I saw you in Panera, so you could have come up to me and said, "Hey, can we talk about your comment?" And you chose not to. I don't, I don't often feel like I'm under attack, but I feel so in this particular realm, because I made a comment at a retreat, but I didn't see anybody when our LGBTQ kids were called disgusting. I didn't see, you know, the comments then about why they were disgusting, or when mental health was talked about, and our kids and mental health. So for me, I've been in your shoes. My kids ate pizza on the floor and wrote pictures on dry erase boards. So it's not that I don't understand a doctor's appointment and so on and so forth. So I look forward to, there was one brave teacher who called me, and we had a conversation. So I look forward to having conversations, so that I can identify what truly I meant. There are things that happen in executive session that I cannot share, but I look forward to having conversations, because I don't ever, when I took this position, I did not want to be the focus of anything. I don't want the focus to be on Tara Dyer, I want it to be on our kids. So I look forward to having conversations. Like I said, one teacher called me, and we had a conversation. I went to that teacher's house, we talked about it, and I'm not afraid of having dialogue. I look forward to it. Again, if I offended anyone, I apologize, because it surely was not my intent.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go on to Item 10, Policy Reading Approval. The superintendent recommends the final reading and approval of the following board policies. This would be for Draft Policy 8120. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, under the current, we still haven't removed some of the things for me to be able to vote on this that are potential. I like the fact, first of all, I like the fact that they have now made it the board we're going to pay for volunteers that are going to be licensed, but I do not like the fact that some of these qualifying crimes, which I don't think are qualifying crimes, are still included. So that's, and I assume this is why that I have this Bricker and Eckler piece here that was provided tonight, that they want me to read through. I get accused all the time of gotcha moments, but when I come in, and this policy's been pending, and we've asked forever, the fact that they're just laying this down for me to look at right before we vote, it's kind of unfair to everybody, but I know that some of these crimes that are in here that unqualifies a person to be an employee or a volunteer here, they're just not true, even under their own Brickler and Eckler stuff, so I'll vote no for the policy that is written and presented.
Wow. I thought we fixed that.
Yes, so in my update to the board, I did state that I was going to have Julie Kenny come, because there's actually two things that we took back to the policy committee. Number one was switching the cost. I need to get this back on. Sorry, John. There were two things that we took back to the policy committee. Number one was that we wanted, you wanted the board to pick up the expenses for all of the PAP for the volunteers, so we did change that.
Which, by the way, we learned we'd already been doing, the athletic department anyway, so it was already being done.
Yes, and there was a question that came up about the actual training, because there is training that's required, and I did speak with Sean Kearns. We have a tool that, it costs about $55, I think he said... We have a tool that, it costs about fifty-five dollars, I think he said, per person, that we, he's already been covering that cost for our volunteers, so this would just make it official in policy that we would be covering that. The second piece does go to the list of offenses that are listed. As we had discussion in the meeting, we felt that we should leave these here as they are suggested by Neola, but we have a process that we use for teachers, and then I was gonna ask Julie to just speak to that. I didn't think you would clearly understand that. We spoke about it in the policy committee meeting. So, Dr. Kenny, if you could come up and just kind of walk them through, and I printed a copy for you, as some of these things are delineated as how we talked about rehabilitation. So I just wanted Dr. Kenny to talk through that process to help you understand, but we do believe that we should keep the policy as is, and we can address that we would utilize a process in our administrative guideline of how we carry out the policy.
So there is going to be, as I recall, the policy committee meeting, a rehabilitation ability for some of these items, not all, but some.
Right, we would use this guidance, but it would be as part of our administrative guideline, which is how we carry out the policy.
Right, right. If the policy says no, then it's a no. There is no policy that we get around at some backdoor measure. If the policy says you can't do it because you have a drug conviction, then you can't do it. I don't, I don't understand how we're gonna continually violate policies here at the Marion City Schools. It is just not proper, and when we talk about funding, this board has not funded volunteers. The athletic budget has funded it from the money they raise. So just so everybody is clear on what's happening, the athletic department has not been funded by the board for several years. Mr. Kearns has taken upon himself through his fundraising to then do it. I am happy the board is stepping up to then replace the athletic department funding, but we haven't been doing it in the past, the way this policy reads, was just the board doing it. And secondly, if the policy says you can't do it, you can't do it. I don't care what your administrative guideline says. The administrative guideline would then be wrong because it's violating the policy.
So what happens in the HR office, when we get the PAPs, the fingerprints, they all go through my office, and I look to see if there are any criminal convictions that violate Ohio Administrative Code that's in line with thirty-three nineteen or on thirty-three oh one. And so there are some, according to ODE, that should be under rehabilitative construct, and some that are prohibitive offensive for hire or for volunteering. And so then I just look at these things that are published under ODE, and so those things that can be rehabilitated, if they're a felony, it has to be more than five years old. If it's a misdemeanor, it has to be at least five years past, not a repeat offender, and then upon request, a written confirmation of efforts of rehabilitation and the result of that rehab. So the reasonable person could conclude that the hiring does not jeopardize the health, safety, and welfare of the person served by the district. So there is a form that we use that verifies that rehabilitation possibility. It has to be signed by that person applying and the superintendent. So if we have a policy that admits rehabilitation, we would like to use this form. So I'm just trying to reconcile what is prohibitive and what is rehabilitative for both licensure and volunteers.
So we're consistent with state law and the ODE and what can our policy?
As I understand it, yes.
And I just, you know, Neola does recommend these, and boards have an opportunity to either accept or deny, but I do know that, you know, they don't support backing up any policies if we change certain things that have to do with legal requirements.
If we, if we do something contrary to the law, Neola's not gonna back us up.
Correct.
So does that mean, like, expungements and those type things as well? Is that a rehabilitative type thing?
You wouldn't know about an expulsion.
I, yeah, I wouldn't know about those. So like, things that are on my list, as far as like, things that are prohibitive include aggravated murder, felonious assault, and they have to be the felony level. So even if they have a felony, it could be over five years old, then they could be rehabilitated. Kidnapping, those kinds of really bad things. Air quote, really bad, sorry.
I guess I'm interested to hear Mr. Ratliff's reservations after hearing Dr. Kenny's speak.
My reservations are, an administrative guideline gives you, it interprets the policy. So there's no way that you can, through an administrative guideline, violate a policy. It's impossible, okay? So once you have the policies, you can look at policies as the law. There's nothing allows you to violate the law, no matter how bad you want to. So these policies are the board's law, if you will, and they need to interpret it through an administrative policy. An administrative policy would then be able to interpret and say, "Well, this is what the board meant." The problem is, you cannot violate this through, you would be violating this policy through administrative guideline.
I think you're misleading us a bit. The administrative guidelines are consistent with the policy.
They're, they're not.
And the policy is consistent with law.
They're, they're not, because the admin, these policies, just say, okay, if you have a policy that just throws out whatever, okay? For instance, a drug offense, okay? It just throws it out. You can't then have an administrative guideline that rehabilitates the person as to the policy that you just ex-nate. That's, that's an impossibility.
I don't recall exactly the language in our policy, but I just asked you if our policy is consistent with state law and ODE, and you said yes.
As I understand it, yes. So like, things that I disqualify are, are those that are within the stated timeframe. So like aggravated murder, I don't want to have to sign off and say that's okay.
But does that policy reference state law?
It does reference state law. The last update of the current policy says we exclude things like drug trafficking, let's say.
In accordance with state law?
Yes, in accordance with state law, yes.
Okay. I guess I'm reminded of the, the youth, usage fees that we had talked about a couple of board meetings ago, where the, the policy, or the administrative guidelines for the policy that it was tied to had mentioned that there would be certain, particular nonprofit groups that would not be charged, and yet the policy stated, "Well, everybody's gonna be charged," and that's where I, I didn't see where those two matched up. And that's what I'm reminded of here when we talked about, if it's a, I don't have that one, I didn't think that that would be coming up tonight. Again, the usage fees policy, and then the usage fee administrative guideline.
The rental of our property?
Yes, yes, so it was at, one of the very bottom portions of it, and it mentioned specifically nonprofit groups would not be, aside from if it needed police presence at that, or if it did require a second, not to bring that whole thing up again, but that's what I, that's why I'm asking the question, because the policy did not appear to match the guy.
And I don't mind, policy meets again this Wednesday, right? Don't we meet soon?
The ninth, yes.
And in Columbus.
Well, I don't mind pulling this off tonight and going back to policy.
It sounds like I agree with the administrative guideline and not the policy, so I don't know...
You just want it to be consistent.
Correct. I don't know if, if in here it talks about, if we had something that talks about the offended, offenses, and then this is the way you can rehabilitate yourself on certain offenses, not all of them, obviously, murder, you're just out. There's just no way, I mean, you can't do anything with that. But certain offenses can be rehabilitated as we've been provided with this.
Right.
So I think those should be listed in the policy as well. I mean, it should say that. However, if you've been charged with these things, you can be rehabilitated and refer to X.
Couldn't you just add to the policy the statement, unless it is considered a rehabilitative offense?
Correct, yeah, I mean, something like that and refer them to somewhere else.
By ODE, and then, and refer to the guideline to see those offenses. I mean, it could be as simple as that.
Simple as that, yes, correct.
I thought it did that, but I'll re-read it.
No, it just lists, it just lists the, just basically saying these offenses are out.
The policy?
Yeah, it doesn't really, here, here it is, if you want to see it. It just looks at the back.
Are all of those rehabilitatable? Are all of those?
No, not in the policy.
I mean, there's gonna be...
Some of them are rehabilitatable.
A bunch of those will not be because they're high-level felonies.
Yeah.
You know, murder, robbery, stuff like that.
You know, and, and I don't know what the requirement is for a PAP. Like, I, I don't know if ODE, when you apply for that license, says, "No, if you have this, you can't get it." Like, I don't know what their rules are. That, so if they couldn't get a PAP, they couldn't be a volunteer for sports, right? So I would think those offenses would be the same as what ODE does mean.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine, I just want something, we have a lot of people in this community that have made mistakes, that want to be involved in our children, that can be mentors to them, so the same mistakes aren't done by the next generation or two generations. This policy would then exclude a lot of these people from being around our children, and their crime could have happened thirty years ago. And they've taken all the steps since then to rehabilitate themselves and be model citizens. So I think that just needs to have something that allows, someone who has rehabilitated themselves for the crimes that are allowed, to be able to know that, and the policy should represent that.
So just to be clear, at the bottom here, where it reads offenses, and we have the list A through Y, we should explicitly state which offenses would be rehabilitated.
Yeah, I mean, some are, some of them are, and some are clearly not. You know, I mean, it's not even close to being rehabilitative.
I understand your point, and I think that we can look at that policy, get that language in there.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
All right, so there is a motion and a second on the table.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay. We'll come back to that. We'll table it for now.
Refer to committee meeting as soon as this Wednesday.
On Wednesday?
All right.
Scott, you're on policy?
It's okay. All right. We're going to go to item eleven, information and discussion items. First reading of board policy updates. You have there the draft policies for sixteen seventeen, thirty-two seventeen, forty-two seventeen, fifty-three ten, fifty-six ten, seventy-two seventeen, and these are primarily about weapons, and then we have health services for fifty-three ten. Fifty-six ten is removal, suspension, expulsion, and permanent exclusion of students. And so this is just our first reading. Did anyone have any comments? All right.
If you can get any comments to us by Wednesday, the committee does...
That'd be awesome, yeah. All right. I don't think we have any further business. We are going to go into executive session. This would be to discuss our treasurer search. Do I have a motion?
So move. Second.
Call the roll, please. Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mr. McInnes? Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
And Mrs. McKay? Yes. So I don't expect any action after this executive session. I want to thank you all for coming. Safe travels going home. I'm looking forward to the start of school next week. I mean, there'll be lots of things going on, so very exciting time. It's always nice to have everybody come back, and it's nice to see our enrollment numbers going up. So, thank you for all your hard work this summer, and we will see you on the twenty-first is our next board meeting. So thank you all for coming. I believe, August twenty-first, yeah.